Good morning, everyone. This is our day to meet with candidates for administrative position. And I welcome all of you that would be viewing us with video, and I welcome all of you that are here. There'll be people coming and going. Department heads will be popping in and out here and there. So just be aware, a little bit of a movement back here. And so for the beginning of our meeting here, we'd like to welcome you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Your mic is on. Thank you for your patience. It's been kind of a long time since we were able to get this put together. So appreciate your patience in all this. So we're going to begin for the public to know all the commissioners here. So I will start. I'm Commissioner Ginny Storey, and I represent the west end of Cook County, Lutson, Tofti, Shoder, and part of Pike Lake.
Good morning. I'm Dave Mills, Commissioner for District Three, and that's the west side of Grand Marais over to Cascade River.
I'm Commissioner Deb White, your neighbor, living in Holland, District One.
Commissioner Gary Gamble, and I'm District Two, which is the east side of Grand Marais.
Good morning, Beth. Anne Sullivan, Commissioner for District Four, which is primarily Devil Track Lake area and Gunflint Trail.
So we do have some prepared questions. So for my fellow commissioners, I will start the first one, and I will end the last one, only because if you notice on the last one, there's some time factor there. So that's why we'll end with that one. So if there's nothing else that people would like to comment on, I will start with our first question. So please tell us what interests you about Cook County and the administrative position? And what highlight qualifications would make you believe you're the best person for this job?
Okay, thank you for that, Madam Chair. Well, I heard about the tragic loss for the prior administrators in his family. And that's when I first started thinking about it, like, is he gonna stay? Is he gonna go? I'm a former resident of Cook County, actually Grand Portage. I'm a tribal member in Grand Portage as well. I have had, in the last five-plus years, increasing responsibilities having to do with administration of governments and nonprofits, tribal governments and administration. My career has been mostly in federal civil service for the National Park Service. I started as a GS4 park ranger as a seasonal guide and was quickly promoted to a permanent position within the Park Service for a 579 position. And so I worked at that position, reaching the Level Nine after three years, which was really fast in the National Park Service for a permanent position. As a GS9, I was in charge of the historical site at Grand Portage and the interpreters and the volunteer program. And so I started my management career there, where I was managing the entire site, all of the programs, and getting the rangers to move around. I managed the seasonal training, which is a two-week seasonal training, where we took them all around and taught them a lot of things. And so that was some of my first management, and I really liked it. I really enjoy developing new leaders. It makes my heart so warm to come into a room and to know people who want to lead, because it is a hard job. And I really enjoy it. So getting back to the actual question, I apologize. What made me want to apply for the administrator job is I believe that it's the place that I can really do a lot of difference. Cook County is my home. I've been here a long time. Came back, moved back in 2006 and worked for the Park Service. Gosh, the first question, I'm a little nervous. I apologize. But I will, I'll shed that, and it's no problem. In 2019, I ran as for an elected leader position in Grand Portage, and my tribe trusted me to run the sovereign nation. I did that diligently during the COVID-19 pandemic. We were trusted to run our government through one of the hardest times with the loss of our longtime 27-year leader. I stepped into this leadership position. And we hit the ground running, and then we closed all of our enterprises and businesses. Immediately, I assigned the council to take a 25% cut in our pay so that we would keep on going and be able to run our government. And so I know what it is like to live through hard financial situations and to make those hard cuts that you don't want to make. After my term was done at Grand Portage, I returned to the National Park Service. They asked me to come back to train their ranger team. And so I did that, knowing full well that I was going to be applying for other jobs in the county. And that's when I was hired as the EDA Director, which was a job that was here in Grand Marais, and we did a lot of our business here in this room. I really enjoyed that work. And being at the helm of the EDA was really interesting and a really great learning experience. What it lacked was a team, because you're the only person. And so I was seeking places where I could be part of a team. I was, then I set my sights on the Minnesota Chipua Tribe, the executive director there. It's 40,000 band members, and we had programs and businesses and different administrative duties that we did at the tribe. And so that was the position that really, really prepared me for something like this. Our quarterly meetings were five different meetings with subcommittees and the regular board, and I ran those. I was in charge of all of our staff. Being in charge of leaders is what that job was. And the leaders who were doing the work were in human services, were in banking, and then in enrollment and administration. And so I brought that team together, and we started to address some of the issues, some of the issues that we were facing. And so that kind of brings me to here and thinking this is a natural step for me as I've been leading an increasing responsibility for the last 10, 15 years. So that brings me here.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll move on down the line here.
Thank you, Beth. Please describe your management style and how that facilitates teamwork among the board and staff and partner organizations.
My leadership style is to bring people together, to mash up whatever we're working on and to throw it around and to hopefully come out with the best solution. This kind of leadership style I've learned takes time, and it takes positive positivity. Because when you bring people together and you ask them, "What is your point of view? What is your point of view?", they're not going to be the same. And so what we have to do is come together on that, and we have to make the decisions along the way. And so my leadership style brings people together, and it gets people working as a team towards one common goal. And I know that we have common goals here with the comprehensive plans that we have in place in Cook County. And so I have realized in the last bunch of years that this style is more difficult to come to some kind of a consensus. But I think that with hard work and with communication, bringing a team together towards that goal takes talking to each other and takes the hard conversations. And then when you come out of it, you know that you did the work and you made the right decision. Thank you.
Commissioner White? Please describ, oops. What experience do you have working with union employees in collective bargaining agreements?
I don't have experience working with union employees or collective bargaining. I don't have that experience. I do have experience in following laws and deciphering laws and state laws. And I believe that that would help me to be able to come through this.
Hi, Beth. I guess I'm next up here. The question is, describe how you believe the relationship between the county administrator and the chair and the board members should function.
Well, all boards are different, and all charges are different. For this role, the commissioners are running the show. We, as in the staff of the county, present to you our best ideas for what our business should be going forward. You need to have thought-out ideas that come to you in a timely manner. And you need to be able to make decisions. And sometimes that means that we got to go back and do more work when we get your charges. And so the administrator is the go-between, between the employees and the board. And hopefully, that relationship between the chair and the administrator is pretty close. There should be no surprises. There should be no surprises at a meeting. Everything should be thought out ahead of times. I know, that's just, that's best-case scenario. But I believe that the chair and the administrator would have a pretty close business relationship working with that. And the commissioners need to be up to date on everything that's going on. They cannot be surprised by the business that's going on in these walls here in the county and with our employees.
Beth, as a follow-up, when you say that the role of the administrator and working with the chair and communication that go between staff and commissioners, what is your position or opinion on the communications between commissioners and staff and department head as far as commissioners being informed on issues? So when your response is that you see the administrator role as a go-between between staff and commissioners, just wanted to know how you flesh that out a bit relative to communication between commissioners and department heads and staff? Is that a question?
Well, if we would want to be able to follow all open-meeting laws that we had, we wouldn't want to get anybody in any situation that would get them in trouble. If, say, you wanted to go talk to staff members, I believe that the public has a right to talk to public staff. And being a commissioner, that puts you in a decision-making kind of leadership role with the staff, we would want to make sure that nobody felt like they were being come down on by, we don't want anybody afraid of you guys. We want them to be able to be open with you. And so if there was a decision, I think that I should be involved or a department head should be involved. A commissioner probably shouldn't tell a staff member what to do, like, who's doing their job, just to get the full story. But you may want to talk to someone. And if that's legal, you should be able to do that. Does that flesh out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of nuance to it, which is understood. But when you're talking about building a team and a cohesive unit and collaborating communication and being informed and making informed decisions, then that collaboration is important. But understanding roles relative to what responsibilities are and all working towards the same thing, it's important that we understand our place, but it's also important that that collaborative effort is informed through relationships, so.
Absolutely. Some of the best teams that I've built have done some groundwork that includes, you know, what's your communication style? What way do you learn? Multiplicity of learning. What makes you comfortable at work? What makes you uncomfortable at work? So we have to know that about our teams. And if somebody's gonna just shut down, we want to uplift them, and we want to empower them in their positions. And we don't want them to think that they're going to be in trouble or anything like that.
Understood. Thank you.
Beth, please describe your involvement in the budgeting and financial process of your organizations previously, as well as your experience with long-range financial planning.
I have experience in budgeting and long-range financial planning. In Grand Portage, I created our first budgeting process as a tribal chair there. We did not have a process before that. While I was there, we did. In budgeting, I've got the most experience with this in the Minnesota Chipua Tribe, where we were faced with cuts and where we were faced with having to make our budgets make sense. And so the hardest part about budgeting is when you have less money than the next year than you did the previous year. And so I have experience with that. I, in the past, have let the administrators create their, kind of their dream budget, what they want, and then we work as a team to figure it out, what's going to work. As for financial planning, with Minnesota Chipua Tribe, I was involved in a lot of financial planning. We did not have a CFO or a financial person that was expected to be in my office. And we actually went through processes of hiring auditors and an RFP for forensic auditing. So I have a lot of experience in audits and completing those. And then the financial planning, we did a strategic plan, which was a three-year strategic plan through a firm. And that included financial projections and what we wanted to see in that time period.
Thank you. One of the areas that we are always concerned about is organizational awareness. And so I'm kind of wondering about, tell us about your organizational awareness and how it's benefited a prior employee in making a change or improvements.
Sure. One of the, one of great training. We did a lot of trainings in the National Park Service. It was mandated. But one of the greatest trainings I was involved in was organizational leaguership. And organizational leadership, the way that we learned it, was each person is in charge of their own job. And that is what they do, is they are, they become masters of what they are supposed to do. And if you know that your employees are doing exactly what they're supposed to do, or if their charge is to do what they're supposed to do, then you can help them along the way. And so everybody masters their own position. I believe that you can empower them to take that position and move with it. As an organization, that means that you have to trust people a little bit more. You have to empower them by giving them training and retraining and training and training again. Coming together as a team in a circle is one of the biggest ways I like to do that so that we're all looking at each other, kind of like we're doing today. And just reiterating what our mission is and our charge and that we are servants here and we are doing the good for the people.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. What does leadership mean to you? And what is the most, what is most important to you in leading an organization?
Oh, leadership, leadership is kind of an, is an idea. It is an idea that you, you want to move somewhere and you want to go somewhere. And you need somebody, you need people that want to move with you. And sometimes the people don't really necessarily see the straight line, and so they need a leader to do that. I've been in leadership positions nearly my entire life. I was a president of my CCHS class for three years. And then I moved into political science and business administration in college. And I've always been, I was a captain of all of my high school, or of my volleyball team. And I've gone through leadership positions. And sometimes you have a team that you really click with, and sometimes you got to work on your team. But they have to be, they're the ones who look to you for the decision-making and for that. And you have to be steadfast, and you have to, you have to be chill, as you might think, as a leader, never losing your head or being too emotional.
Describe a time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with the situation? And what was the outcome?
Well, we all make mistakes. And when you ask the question, a certain situation comes to mind, where it was an HR situation. And I sat two people down who were, it was an administrator and an employee, and they were having an issue. And somehow, my mistake, I feel, is I lost, I lost control of the room, and they both ended up, they both ended up stomping out. But I think that my mistake was that I didn't learn enough about this situation before I sat people down and started asking questions of them, because they instantly got defensive. And I felt so terrible when they both rushed out, because we didn't get to the meat of the issue, because I asked the question and got the emotional answer that came out. And it was a turning point for the division. And eventually, that employee ended up leaving. And that was probably the best scenario that could have happened. But I think when you say mistake, that popped into my head, because I wasn't prepared before the meeting to ask the right questions, to not get that emotional response, and to get the actual meat of the question in. And so what I would do, what I have done in the past to correct that, is to sit people down one-on-one and ask them, you know, what's the issue here? What's the real issue? Sit down and try to get to it beyond, you know, "I don't like her, or he doesn't like me", and get to the real meat of the issue and try not to make those mistakes with the emotional questions.
Thanks.
Matthew touched on this previously in one of your responses pertaining to strategic planning, what your experience creating and implementing a strategic plan. But probably, more importantly, maybe to this question, is what makes a strategic plan successful?
What makes a strategic plan successful? I have, I have lots of experience in doing strategic plans. I think that most successful plan that I've done so far is a three-year plan, the one that's like, "This is what we're moving towards. This is what we do when we get to here." And the plan has to be able to move along with you, because you're, you're, you're planning a course that you haven't done yet. And if your plan gets to a point where it has, where it stops, then stakeholder buy-in is done. You can't, you can't move through. And so what I would say with, what I did with strategic planning at the Minnesota Chipua Tribe is we did two sets of planning. We did the staff strategic planning of what they thought that they needed to do with the charges that they had. And we also did the board strategic planning. And what was really interesting from that is that they were different, that they were different. The charges of the employees have to line up with the charges of the commissioners, what they want to see done, or else you're never, your plan isn't going to work because you're working towards different goals. That was one big thing I learned through that process. And implementing the plan was one of the hardest part. It was, we wrote a new personnel manual or an employee handbook. And we had a firm that helped us with that. So all of the staff gave buy-in into that, what they wanted to see as their rules, right? And then the, not the commissioners, they're the tribal executive committee over at MCT. They had their rules and our constitution and our laws to follow. And so the implementation of the plan is training and retraining, and then training again, like I said.
Thank you.
Beth, describe your current professional network or the steps you'd take to develop a network of local government professionals that you can share ideas with and get advice.
Oh, the, is it the League of Minnesota Counties, I believe? I've been all over their website. I think the state of Minnesota has some great resources for new administrators. And so I would reach out to some administrators who'd been in the position for a while. Our population is 5,600. There's about six other counties who have roughly about the same kind of area and kind of population that we do here. So I'd reach out to them first. And then my network includes, oh, I don't know. I've worked with state government for the last five years. I have contacts in, in a lot of the different agencies at the state. I am a personal friend of Peggy Flanagan at the lieutenant governor stage right now. And that has helped in the past with my work in the tribes. The tribes work closely with the state as tribal citizens are also state citizens. We share that. And the work of this, I come in contact with a lot of the leaders of state agencies, like the ITRRB and the DNR in the past and the Climate, the Pollution Control Agency, and also their tribal liaisons. I have contacts at state agencies that have just kind of grown. And then locally, you know, I'd like to talk to past leaders and people along the way, citizens, of course.
All right, thank you. So along the way now, we have heard from you with experience in working with other units of government. But how do you develop a service partnership with them?
Service partnership? Well, developing partnerships and developing friendships are kind of, kind of go hand in hand. I think having both informal and formal meeting times is really good. There was a joint powers group here at the county that was really, I think, was one of the coolest things when I was a tribal chair, is we would meet, and it was the heads, it was leaders within the county. And we would throw things around. And this was during COVID, so we met, we met quite a bit. And just having those meetings, but also running into somebody in the community And just having those meetings, but also running into somebody in the community and just saying, hey, you do that one thing, and having an informal conversation where you can, where you can really get to the meat of, of what the citizens want is really important. Building partnerships, it just takes, it takes time and it, it takes deliberate actions. It takes communication. It takes trust and building trust and moving through all of those steps in a relationship. Writing letters is a way to build partnerships and, and having meetings. I, I believe in kind of a more organic way of building partnerships where you, you come along the way as people and then the business kind of comes along after that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Describe how you, you would become involved in the Cook County community and build trust with residents and local business owners.
Well, I, I, I'd like to say that I am a member of the community already. I miss, I miss home a lot. I live in Bemidji currently. But through this position, I've thought about this and it, it's a, it would be really, it would be a lot. You know, I've lived in ski towns, so I know, I, I've lived in, in Wyoming and in, and in Colorado and ski towns, and I feel like I kind of have a kindred spirit out in Luton. I've lived on the rez. You know, my mom lives here in Grand Marais and my, my grandparents, my mom's parents lived in, were business owners here in Grand Marais. I think that I have a lot in common with a lot of people in Cook County and can put myself in their shoes. And so I believe that I am already a trusted citizen here in Grand Portage through my leadership in Grand Marais and Cook County and Luton and all in between because of the work that I've done in the past. And I'd hope to build on that by meeting some of the new people around and also developing more of, you know, myself as a leader through as many trainings that, that, that will allow me to, the time to, to do if, if needed. And so I think just being in the community and going to events and creating opportunities for, for public discourse and public engagement would be a great part of this position that I would really look forward to is, I don't want to say it, but I love town hall meetings that bring people together and get people talking in, in larger spaces and in small.
Cook County wishes to, to improve relationship with, with tribal nations. How will you demonstrate that you value these relationships and what will you do to show a meaningful commitment to working together?
Well, I happen to know the chair in Grand Portage personally and I've worked with him on many occasions. And anyone who comes into that position after, I would work with tribal nations, share, they are Minnesota citizens as well. And so we have to work hand in hand with the tribe, the leaders of the tribal nations. What would I do? I, I would offer, just offer to be there for them. Say, we're here if you need this, this, or this. We don't need to insert ourselves in the business of the tribes because they have their own business that they have to take care of, but our roads go through the reservations, you know, our polling places, you know, we, you, they're elected by you. And so they need to know what you're doing as commissioners and as a county government, just as much as you would like to know a little bit about what they're doing as well. And so I understand that trust relationship that the federal government shares with tribes, but I also know that you've got to work with each other on a day-to-day basis and that tribal, I, I know tribal government.
Beth, can you describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
And I will.
It's sort of a heavy question, but a very, you know.
It really is. You know, when you come into an organization, you don't know what they do on a daily, daily basis. They don't, you don't know their day-to-days. But you do know that they have a set of rules and they have usually a pamphlet or a binder. I have, for the administrator here, you would have the laws that the administrator was created Coming into an organization that doesn't follow its own rules would be one of the hardest things that I've done. And instituting a change where you start to follow those rules can be really hard. And you get backlash from employees because possibly they're just doing their job, they're trying to get the, the work done. But it says in the manual that you're not supposed to do this. Why are we doing it? And then you get crickets in the room because they don't know why they're doing it, they're just doing their job. And so as an ethical leader and a leader with integrity, I say, well, we're not, we're not doing this anymore because you guys are breaking this rule. And without, you know, throwing anybody under the bus or anything like that, just knowing that your organization has rules and you've got to follow them. And if you're not following them, you've got to say, we're not following the rules right now, but we're going to start. And I've, and I've worked in organizations where the, the rules were the rules. In the federal government, in the National Park Service, we followed the rules to the T, everything. But as you get into organizations that, that are left without leadership for periods of time or who are left to fend for themselves, they, they'll make it up and the employees and the staff who are there, they'll make it up and they'll, they'll do the job that, that they're paid to do. But the administrator is there to make sure that they're doing it in the way that they're supposed to do it, which follows the rules. If you don't like the rules, we can change the rules. We make, make a change to the law. We go to the commissioners and we go, we go as far as we need to, but until then, we follow the rules. And I think that that's something I really stand by. And it's hard when you work with people who don't like to follow the rules. But that's the way I like to live my life.
Yeah. But I would say, you know, based upon the conversation that, that we've had, Beth, is that in this area of, of how do you actually bring substance to those words, integrity? And so when you find yourself in a leadership role and you want to build integrity in processes by following the rules, with your previous comments about how you work collaboratively and you build a team, when you get resistance like that, that's where, who you are as a person and building integrity in that process is a very delicate, difficult balance to try to, how do I contribute to my value of building a team? And how do I maintain the integrity that I believe we need to hold to in our processes? So it, for a leader, that, that is something that is very difficult, balancing those, those two sides of the equation. But how it plays out is that, that your integrity will work and you invest emotionally in that process to try to obtain those two values. So I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth, you've alluded to a similar situation, but describe a past experience you've had correcting an employee performance problem. How would you approach correcting an employee performance issue?
Well, we val, I, I value anyone who wants to spend their, their time working and being in a place. Again, we have to find out what, what's going on. Why, why is that employee on the naughty list or why are they, they not doing what they're supposed to be doing? I'm trying to think in my mind of, of times when, when this has happened and, you know, some, it happens. There, there are people who aren't happy in their jobs and so they, they perform poorly. There are people who are not doing what they thought they would be doing, so they perform poorly. And so it's about setting expectations and following through with those expect, with what you expect. And if someone isn't doing it, you have to go directly to that person and say, you're not doing exactly what I told you to do. Why? Why? Okay. Well, what you have to do is this. How can we get you to move towards this? And so whether it's working with the person to help them realize that they're in a position that they don't want, that they, you know, they're not happy here. Maybe it's time that they, they thought about that, right? Because some people just are in positions where they don't want to be in. Give them the out. But the people that you want and the people that you want to develop, there, there are so many options. There are just, there's, people have asked me, can I move my supervisor? Can we, can we move over here? I'm like, that's your supervisor? That's the person who's in charge of you? No, you can't do that. You guys have to work it out. In HR, there's so many different reasons and that, for people to not be doing good. And what you have to do is find out why that one person isn't doing good and try to make it better for them and for the organization.
So Beth, could you describe some priorities that you see here in Cook County?
Well, I know, I know that we've got some projects that are on the line. I know that there's a capital improvement program that Rowan's been loving, I'm sure. And I know that I, I think the number one issue that we'll probably be facing in the next five years is budget cuts. Hearing what we're hearing from the, from the federal level on down to the state, we have to do the same as we're doing today with less every single day. And so as, as a charge for the county, making the most out of our dollar, showing the people the value of the work that we do and keeping, keeping a, a, a good relationship from one end of the county to the other. We're so spread out that, you know, even just to have a meeting to come together is like a full-day thing because you've got people, you guys know that. And so creating ways to stay on the same page even though we're far away and we have completely different, different lives. And so different ends of the county have different, different needs and then we all have the same needs. And making sure that everybody is aware that there are different needs and there are same needs. So I think the administrator is kind of a, helps to, to get the word out to that as well and to, to kind of move in that direction. So to answer your, your questions, the top three things would be budgeting and doing more with less and communicating end-to-end to county, of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Why should the Cook County Board select you as our next county administrator?
I think you should select me, Beth Dross, as the next county administrator because I can move into this position and I can start on day one with what you want me to do and what I, what I, what I should be doing with managing the county. I have worked in increasingly hard and increasingly more, with increasingly more populations of citizens and my leadership to this point has, has grown in every position that I've been in. I have moved up because I have put in the time and I have the basic, have the basics I think you should not only hire me for this role because you want to, but because, because I care about the people and I care about the land of Cook County and I care about this place a lot. And I've worked in leadership positions that have brought me to this place. And, and I will, I'll work hard for you. You've read my resume, you've seen my quest, my, you've seen my questionnaire, you've read my personal statements, you've seen my, all of the tests that you've put in. You, you guys have really done the work here to, to make sure that you have the top applicants pop to the top and I'm here because of that.
Thank you. Would you believe we're at our last question?
I'm watching the clock.
You can relax, have a drink. I'm going to ask you, do you have any questions for us?
Yes, I do. I, I, I'd like to ask, you know, what are the top three charges that the, the board is seeing for the administrator? What, what would you like to see hit the ground running in the, in the, as the first couple of things that you want to see? That's one question.
Start, Dave.
Oh, sure. I, I think, I think you're aware of, of them pretty well, but the capital improvement plan, I think, is extremely important. That's been long in coming and, and takes a lot of time and effort and resources to, to complete and many different steps of that. And, and we need to be nimble and adapt as markets change or our communities' needs change or budgets change and as well as our strategic plan and, you know, keeping, keeping on track with that. That was developed with both county staff as well as commissioners together. And, and it's really put us on a, on a good path for getting the staff we need, supporting the staff we have and, and working towards our capital needs. And then also, I think, you know, looking to the future and, and trying to anticipate the, the demographic changes and just the ripple effects of, of some of these changes because it feels like there's never been more changes and it's, it's really hard to predict the future. But we can look to the past to see what outcomes we could expect from some of the changes that are happening. So that's just my, that's just my two cents.
Okay, well, I've got two cents. I want communications from our administrator. I want honesty and I want transparency. I want, and that goes not just from, to board people, but, but that the entire staff of the, of our employees feel valued and listened to, but, but understand that the importance that they are to the organization does not give them the opportunity to do anything they want. They are, they do have, they need to answer to the public and this is a team effort. So that's what I want. That's what I want this new administrator to do.
Having been part of this process previously, we as, as a board had identified what it is that we had hoped. You spoke about expectations and I think in any job that you step into understanding the expectation of the organization, what your role is, what your responsibilities are, and setting that, that direction is, is important, having structure so that you know the context in which you operate and your role and responsibility. you know the context in which you operate and your role and responsibility. Having said that, I, I think the biggest challenge and, and what I would like to see is, um, uh, understanding the values of who we are, correctly identifying who we are as, as a community and the diversity that exists. And in identifying who we are, establishing values related to who we are and then aligning our governance with those values so that we reflect in our decision-making and our policy and in our budgeting, that we are aware of the people that we serve and how we connect and align what we say with what we do in our governance.
Thank you.
And Beth, as I think about a new administrator coming to Cook County, my hope is that we have someone that will listen to the diverse community that we have here, that, that individual will reflect on what they hear from the community and that they're very honest and effective with their communication with both staff and community. And thinking of staff, one of the things I think that is so important and you've touched on it this morning is that we need to support our staff and give them opportunities for professional growth. We have some tremendous leaders that we're building here in Cook County and we want them to stay. And so providing those opportunities and the support and the guidance through leadership is going to be very critical for the next person coming into this position.
I hear you. Um, I had other questions too. We just, they, they say you're supposed to write them down and do it.
We're, we're at the end here and we have a whole list now of the top three that you said and we have eight or nine, so.
Get to it. Um, thank you. Yes, no, I, I, I think that the, the charge will be varied and, um, very important no matter what it is and, um, I'm ready to go.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Thanks for all your time. I know that you've spent a lot of time on this.
Good morning, Pat. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For the drive that you had, I assume wasn't too bad this morning?
It was just fine. Thanks for asking.
So, you will notice in the back, there's some coming and going. And we've invited the public, if they'd like to view, also the department heads. And we also have invited folks if they wanted to watch it on YouTube, too. So, there's a few eyes out here, looking at our backs. I'm going to begin with introductions, and so you know kind of the spread of our county. I'm Commissioner Jenny Storley, and I represent the West End. So, you came through Tofti, Lutzen, and Schroeder, and then I do a part of Pike Lake.
Good morning, Pat. Thanks for being here. Dave Mills, Cook County Commissioner for District Three, and that's the west side of Grand Murray over to Cascade River.
I'm Commissioner Deb White, District One, the east end of the county, starting out on sixty-one, including the sovereign nation of Ranportage.
Commissioner Gary Gamble, District Two, which claimed to fame as world's best doughnuts, and so I'm on the east end of Grand Murray.
And good morning, Pat. Ann Sullivan, Cook County Commissioner for District Four, which is primarily the Devil Creek Lake area and the Gunflint Trail, all the way up to the Canadian border.
Well, thank you. I'm Pat Omen, applicant for the county administrator position. And thank you, County Board, and thank you, management team, and other public officials for being a part of it. It's nice to see a good response. I know it's a very important decision for the County Board, and so I'm very happy to see it's done in such a public way. So, I think that's appreciated by everyone.
We have a series of questions, and I'll start off, and we'll all take a turn, with some questions that have been prepared. So, please tell us about the interests that you would have with Cook County Administrator position, and the highlight, the key qualifications that make you the best qualified person.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm assuming everyone could hear me well as I speak. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to review my qualifications. I think my interest in the position, for me, is I've been in government service for approximately twenty-three years, mostly for rural county government units and city government units. And so, what attracted me about this position is it's part of the northeastern area of Minnesota, certainly way on the extreme of the northeast, but certainly in the area that I grew up in, was born and raised in. And, you know, as I look at my continued career path, I want to stay in that type of government-management setting, in that rural setting, and particularly in the geographic area that I enjoy living. And so, when the position became available, I was very much interested in reviewing my qualifications, and I'll touch a little bit on those qualifications, since that's part of the question. Predominantly, my government administration service has been at the county level. I spent eight years as a department head for Carlton County, as the Economic Development Director. I actually started that department. They had no Economic Development Department when they hired me, and we established an Economic Development Department that created quite a bit of wealth for the county and for the region. I also created a County Economic Development Authority, Housing Redevelopment Authority, as part of my eight-year position there. And what pleased me about doing and accomplishing those things, it was my home county. It was the county I was born and raised, and to be able to accomplish those things and create jobs and tax revenue meant quite a bit to me. And really, my whole career's been about wealth creation. But moving on from that, I've held a number of positions as a county executive director, both as a executive director of housing redevelopment authorities and county EDAs and HRAs. I've had two separate positions as a county administrator, five years at Millelacs County, being their chief administrative officer of the county, managing all departments, typically what you would see in a county administrator position, but doing quite a bit of union negotiations, labor negotiations, human resources management, collaborating with the management team to create new policies and to develop new ways of improving the bottom line for that government unit. Spent three, approximately three years as the county administrator for Detroit Lakes, excuse me, for Becker County, which is the county seat of Detroit Lakes. Really enjoyed that position. Provided a lot of wealth. I think the one thing that really excited me about that position is the challenges that I encountered when coming into that government unit, and I may touch on that, depending on the questions that you have, moving on. And then I got, I've been a city administrator as well, at the city of Moose Lake. So, most of my positions, all of my positions have been in the rural county government unit setting. They've been chief administrative officers or executives within either an Economic Development Department or as an administrator. But I think the one other thing that I think distinguishes me from other candidates that might be interested in this position is, I also have quite a bit of private-sector chief administrative officer experience as well. I started my career as a product development engineer for Honeywell. And the interesting thing, I see a lot of, everyone's got a cellphone now. I'd be surprised if no one doesn't, but a lot of the processes, a lot of the materials that go into your cellphones were things that I developed as an engineer, and I was patented for them. And so, I really enjoyed the private sector, and of course, when you do good things in the private sector, they elevate you, and I became a corporate manager as well. And really, the only reason I left the private sector when I started my career was, I had been tasked with moving jobs overseas, and that was something that certainly improved shareholder value and stock value, but it wasn't something I wanted to participate in. I was interested in getting into a role of keeping jobs local or growing jobs within my community. And so, I left the private sector, then I had a number of stints in economic development, as I mentioned, and eventually into both county and city administration. My educational background, I have graduate-level training as an Economic Development Finance Professional, as a Public Relations Manager in Crisis from Homeland Security, and then I have two graduate degrees, one as a Master of Business Administration, and then a Master of Manufacturing Systems, both paid for by the great company of Honeywell. So, that was one great thing I got out of Honeywell, was a free education. But I'm a big believer, when I'm in a position, is to learn and to grow in my position. And as I indicated, I made the move into the public sector, really just because my thinking was, is I want to grow wealth for my community. I don't want to have wealth leave my community. And so, I made that decision, and I've been in the public sector ever since.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Please describe your management style, and how that facilitates teamwork among the board and staff and partner organizations.
Well, my management style is a results-oriented management style, and it depends on, you know, or it's focused on, it's the primary reason for my management style is to evaluate, who are the experts within each department and each unit that can give me the guidance through management team meetings, through one-on-one meetings, to develop great policies and strategies that we can bring to the County Board. I'm not going to be an expert on everything. As I indicated, my background is in Economic Development, and so I have to depend and acknowledge the fact that the people in this room, the department heads and the supervisors and the management team, are really the administrators of their particular area, and they have a lot to offer, to providing solutions and providing input on policy and ordinances, as we vet those items and bring them to the County Board. So, my management style really is about working directly with those employees, and I do that a number of ways. I'm a big believer in one-on-one meetings with each department head. I think it's important to understand and appreciate having that monthly meeting. I require that they schedule that meeting, and the reason I set that up that way is, I don't want them to schedule a meeting with me if they have nothing to say. I want it to be beneficial to them, but also beneficial to me. And as part of that meeting, I like to review their budget. I like to discuss the issues that are occurring within their department, innovations and ideas that they are thinking about with their team, and having a discussion about any compliance issues as it relates to, again, the work that's happening in their department. It's also important for me to really appreciate and understand that we're exploiting the expertise of those department heads and those supervisors. As I delve into their experience, if I find that they have a lot more to offer to the government unit, I like to try to find a way to make that happen. And part of the discussion I like to have in those one-on-one meetings is, what is your career path? What do you want to be within the county government unit? Where do you feel that you're not being recognized, or where there may be a growth opportunity? And I think by doing that, results in, for me, a lot of job satisfaction from the employee. Also, it does help with retention, because they're showing that they've been, they're being valued. I have an environment where my employees can be constructively critical. If I have a department head that says to me, "Pat," my expertise in telling me you're going down the wrong path here, I take that very seriously. And they have the ability to ask tough questions and ask me to defend what I'm doing. That's not only, that's not only appreciated, but it's really required, from my standpoint. So, being a good leader and having that type of management style, in my experience of being an administrator for twenty years, has shown, there's been a lot of job satisfaction and employee satisfaction. I think the other thing, though, is important, is the deciders are the board. You are the ones that we eventually have to bring something to. But I think you will appreciate as well, that we are vetting things through one-on-one meetings, through management team meetings on a monthly basis. That's the second thing I really require, is sitting down and having management team review, doing peer reviews, doing round robins of what each department is doing, so the other departments understand what their peers are doing, and really hoping that, as part of that process, we can provide some peer review and some analysis and some guidance, you know, from different perspectives. And I think finally, as part of a leader, and part of my management styles, when we do identify an issue or a problem, is we establish a continuous improvement team, that's really a subset of the management team, to try to solve it. And at the end of the day, when we bring something to you, an idea, or a policy, or a recommendation, you can trust that it's not only been vetted by me, from a compliance standpoint, but it's been vetted by the management team and those individual department heads that it's going to affect.
Pat, what experience do you have working with union employees and collective bargaining agreements?
Well, I'll just, I'll go from my most recent position. At Becker County, I negotiated with nine different bargaining units for two contracts. So, the two, I hope I'm not confusing you when I say that, so, nine different bargaining units, but then two contracts during my time there. At Millelacs County, I negotiated eight different bargaining units, three different times, so three contracts for each of the eight bargaining units. And then at the city of Moose Lake, we had just a smaller number of bargaining units. I negotiated two bargaining contracts. I've been involved in all facets of the negotiation process for bargaining contracts. I've been involved in all facets of mediation and arbitration. I have never lost an arbitration, and that's not a testament necessarily to me. It's a testament to the foundation work we have in putting together solid contracts, and having a solid personnel policy, and having positive and strong relationships, good relationships, positive relationships with our bargaining units. I think the one thing that I've taken very much as a, as, you know, doing something very right as a manager is, when I was at Millelacs County, I think I indicated, we had eight bargaining units there. Well, by the time I left, it turned into six bargaining units. By statute and by PELRA law, we can't ask unions to form or not form. We can't give guidance one way or another. There are consequences to that. But those two bargaining units, and they were fairly large bargaining units, stood up and said, "We're being treated fairly by management. We have solid personnel policies. We want to disband." Now, again, we can't provide any guidance to that. We just say, "Well, you need to contact Bureau of Mediation Services and follow whatever steps you want to follow." But I appreciated that they were willing to go on notice, that they trusted management. They trusted the department heads. They trusted administration. And so, I took that very much, that we were on the right track. And when I talked about continuous improvement teams, you know, those filter down to the bargaining units as well, when we set those teams up. And so, at Millelacs County, we were making sure that even the decision-making role, bargaining units even had a say, outside of the traditional bargaining negotiation contracts. So, quite a bit of experience doing those negotiations, but when things fall short, mediation and arbitration, we've been very successful in winning on behalf of management. But I'm a big believer in, when I negotiate with the bargaining units, is show me your data. Do the benchmarking, because we're doing benchmarking as well. Many things are about wages. And, you know, it's not a surprise, a bargaining unit will come in and say, "Well, we'd like to get the wages Hennepin County's getting." Well, Hennepin County's its own country. They have a much larger budget, and that isn't fair or appropriate, but give me comparables that I can bring to the board. Show me in your benchmarking that we're missing something on a wage standpoint or a benefits standpoint. Show us we're falling short based on comparables, and then it's an easy negotiation, as far as I'm concerned. So, I do like to do a lot of work ahead of time, and working with department heads, working with management, on developing a strategy. But that strategy is about mutual respect with bargaining units, working with them, and I want to achieve the same positive outcome for them that they do. If they deserve higher wages based on the data and the benchmarking, that's what I'm going to propose to the board, and that's what we need to make happen. Because what will happen, if we don't do that, is we will lose in mediation. We will lose in arbitration. So, it's very important to have very direct conversations, and I've had that, and I've been very successful in it.
Thank you, Pat. Describe how you believe the relationship between the county administrator and the chair and the board members should function.
Well, this is a county administrator form of government. I serve at the pleasure of the board. I, in my mind, each of you are no less or more important than the other. You all have equal individual say, and it's very important for me, just like I meet with my management team one-on-one, is to meet with each of you, one-on-one, because you're representing a particular area. You all describe kind of your geographical area that you represent, and it's just different. You're going to have different individuals and different needs, and so you have different expectations of me as an administrator. So, I think the importance is to acknowledge that you all have the ability to speak at a board meeting, and I'm a big believer in, when you've got ideas, whether they conflict, and I've watched some real great meetings that you've had, where you've had some very direct conversations with each other, but you've done it publicly. And I think that's the way to do it. And my relationship to you is to make sure you are in compliance with state statute, that we are in compliance with our county policy and our conduct rules at the board meeting, and to provide you a recommendation when asked, and to vet ideas and projects through the management team, and give you a recommendation on where we're at. And if there's conflict, give you some guidance. There's nothing wrong with us taking a break and Commissioner Mills and Storley can go out in a room and talk. No open meeting law violation. They can have a discussion and come back. But the real goal here is to get all the information before you in a public matter, so you can make an informed decision. That's in the interest of the county. And that's why it needs to be vetted through our individual department heads. It needs to be reviewed with the management team. I need to review the compliance. But I like the idea of meeting with you one-on-one and appreciating, understanding what your goals are. And it does help me to perhaps develop a cohesive strategy that I could bring back to you, that maybe you can buy into and agree to. But the thing is, is when I watch some of your meetings and I see you disagreeing with each other, that's democracy. It's exactly how it should be. I had one county board, I won't name them, but they were so happy because they always agreed with everything, and I said, "Well, that's not good." You know, there's got to be some disagreement. There's got to be some conflict, because you are representing different interests and your own, what you think is best for the district that you represent. So, I think by doing all those things is important, but again, I serve at the pleasure of the board, and my goal is to implement as you direct. But if an individual commissioner comes to me and says, "Pat, I really want you to do this," I'll take it under advisement. But I've also told commissioners, I don't think that's in the interest of the department or the county by following through on that direction. But if it's important to you, let's bring it to the board, and if there's a quorum and the majority directs me to implement that, I will do that to the best of my ability. But it does give me the opportunity to discuss potential consequences and risks by implementing a certain area. So, if you talk to any of my former commissioners, they will tell you that I can be very strong in that regard, and I'm also very, it's also very important that my management team, my department heads, know I have their back. And so, a lot of times, it's entirely appropriate for a commissioner to visit a department head and say something like, "Well, I heard something in the community that said there's an issue, and this is related to your department." That's great. You're the eyes and ears, and you should do that. But I always caution commissioners is, don't evaluate, you know, individual department heads, you know. Allow me to do that, or bring that to me. But certainly, you can evaluate me anytime that you like, either at a board meeting, publicly, or if we go into closed session. So, I think that's the relationship that's worked for me. But it really, it really, I will end with, the deciders are you as a board, and the goal is to get you the information you need to make an informed decision.
As a follow-up, you mentioned that if you talk to former commissioners, that they would say that you are strong in holding your position. And as you will, and as we all know, that can be good or that can be bad. And the good is, if you are strong based upon holding to principle or rule of law or policy, that you are the caretaker of that. And so, if that is the role that defines strong, that can be healthy. If it's strong because of own-way-ness or self-serving, it's unhealthy, so.
Right, and thank you for the distinction, because you're absolutely right on that, and I will expand on that. What I meant is, strong to the county's policies, its principles, state statute. The goal for me is to make sure that the county, whether it's an individual commissioner or as a county board, we don't step into something that we regret, and there's a consequence for us. And there've been many examples in my career where I've had to hold to that pathway, where I've been directed, you know, by a board to do something that is not, it's in violation of our policy and statute, and I have to politely and respectfully refuse. But the good news is, it continues the conversation, and it allows us to get to a solution that the board can approve and I can implement. So, yes, it's always about policy and being compliant to those policies, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thanks, Pat. Could you please describe your involvement in the budgeting and financial process of your previous organizations, as well as your experience with long-range financial planning?
Well, in all my government administration positions, as a county department head, as a county administrator for two different positions, as a city administrator, being the chief administrative officer in those positions also is the budget and financial lead. Certainly, at the county level, sometimes we have appointed auditors. I believe yours is still elected here at the county, but at Millelacs County and Becker County, well, Becker County was still elected, but Millelacs County was appointed. They are the financial person of record, but the budget development responsibility, at least in the positions I've had, that I'm describing, were the county administrator and the city administrator responsible for developing the budget. And that starts with providing a current budget to the department heads, usually in June or July, provide the last two or three years of budget natural of the previous years, so they can conduct trend analysis. That's what's communicated to them. Do a trend analysis for each line item, identify areas that you need to grow with resources, other areas that need to reduce. I'm a big believer in making sure that we're very efficient with our budgets, and we give the budgets to the department heads that they need, but they have to justify it. They have to prove it. They have to document that this is why we need these funds. And I'm very savvy at, and I used to be a department head as well, is putting a little bit of fluff into your budget and say, "Well, I might need this in the future. I need it documented. I need it documented for each line item." But taking them through that whole process, but it really starts, before I begin that process, it starts with the board, is, I always like to talk with the board before I introduce that information to the department heads, and let you know what's happening at the federal government level that could affect us either positively or negatively with our budgets, what's happening at the state capital. I think you know very much of the state capital. In the last biennium, there was a $16 billion surplus. We are now at a $7 billion deficit. It's a heck of a swing in two years. How does that affect us here, you know, at the county government level? And also get direction from you individually and as a group on items that you would like, first, to focus on, either to grow in, to provide resources for, or maybe to reduce costs. But then, after getting that, we've got to have our marching orders, and then I introduce those budgets to my department heads, and we go through that process up through and include the truth and taxation hearing, where we publicly review the preliminary budget and eventually have the county board, in this case, approve the budget. So, I've done all facets of that work, managed that, in concert with our auditor, if there is an auditor at the county level, and have been very successful at it. I think in every situation, in every government unit I've served, I have reduced the budget, but improved the productivity of services. I've improved the credit rating for all three government units where I've been an administrator to a higher credit rating than it was previously. I've exceeded the fund balance requirements of the county auditor requirements, or in the city's case, our financial auditor review. But it isn't easy, and it's very much a team approach, and department heads are, it's a very important role that they play in that process. As I've indicated before, they're the administrators of the department. They know what they need to manage their department and be successful at it. So, I spent a number of years doing that and taking the lead on that. So I spent a number of years doing that and taking the lead on that. Again, in the truth and taxation hearing, preparing those presentations, answering the questions of the citizenry, and then taking, getting feedback throughout that process from the board and continuing to, you know, massage and improve the budget and meeting the county board or the governing body's expectations. As far as long-range planning, from an administrator's standpoint, I've used a number of outside firms like the Magic Fund at the county level. We've partnered with them. But we've also done our own internal financial planning through investments in CDs and other short-term investments. So it's really, my expertise from a county standpoint is partnering with Magic but also doing short-term financial investments and planning as well. The capital approval plan is also a component of an annual budget review. Both as a county and city administrator, I've developed those five-year capital improvement plans. Again, this Minnesota state statute doesn't require, you have a CIP, it recommends, and most counties do. Doesn't require a public hearing, but I always initiate a public hearing independent of the truth and taxation hearing. So again, doing asset review with department heads, incorporating that into a five-year plan, assigning costs and where we're going to place equipment. Most ordinances have 5,000 as the minimum capital improvement plan line item. Everything else is usually in the operating budget. And so I've been very successful at putting those together as well. And I think the budgetary process though is very much a team approach. And where I think it can get really difficult, especially in these times, is we just don't know what's going to happen at the state level right now. And so we have to sort of kind of plan for that. We don't know if there will be a bonding bill. They're planning for a bonding bill, but we don't know if there will be. And so we just don't know what we might be getting out of the state or the federal government. But I try to do my best to benchmark and talk to our legislators to see what might be coming down the path and updating your county board on that as well.
Thank you.
Pat, we're on question number six. We've got a total of 18 and we're over halfway through. So appreciate your thoroughness, but maybe just a little quicker.
Got it. Be efficient, all right? I'll get there. We'll all get there. Yes, thank you, Pat.
So the importance of organizational awareness. So tell us how your organizational awareness has benefited a prior employer in making a change or improvement.
Well, thank you for the question. You know, I think that one of the things that I'm particularly proud of is, this was when I was a department head at Carlton County, back in 2010, major flood in this, up in this region, might have reached up here as well. All four watersheds flooded at the same time. Cities were not figuratively, but literally underwater. My hometown, the city of Barnum, all you saw was rooftops. And so the county was tasked with setting up the regional FEMA application. So I was approached by the emergency management director to take the lead on that. And so I reorganized the county department from, I'm sorry, the county government unit from a county coordinator form of government to a county administrator form of government and I had myself, with county board's permission, to take on that role as administrator through the flood mitigation process. We wrote the regional FEMA grant application for all counties. We did damage assessment across the whole region and documented that work. And we testified at the state to get funds for local business that were being damaged. But FEMA, once we submitted that FEMA application, they considered that a best-practice FEMA application. It was awarded. It was recognized by, at that time, the President of the United States as, to be awarded and the funds flowed to the county into the regional development. But we had to reorganize the whole county to do that. And also reorganize our relationships with the other county governments to facilitate that information gathering.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. What does leadership mean to you and what is most important to you in leading an organization?
Well, leadership means certainly, you're managing people, you're setting a standard of leadership that filters to the management and to their individual employees. You create, as part of being a leader, and I mentioned it earlier, you create an environment where people can be constructively critical, they can ask tough questions of me as the administrator, they can ask me to defend what I'm doing constructively, but they can do that. And that's an environment I would want, because it helps me be an effective leader. I think being accountable and having those one-on-one meetings, but setting performance measures for individual employees. No one likes, after a one-year relationship, to find out they're not doing well on their performance review without being communicated, they're not doing well. And so those monthly meetings are about letting my employees know where they're doing a good job and where they need to improve and giving them the environment to provide feedback why they're in that current situation. But it's very much a team approach in that regard. I tell my employees, you're going to see me coming a mile away. And after a year of monthly meetings, you should be able to write your review. You know what's going to be in your review because we've had monthly meetings and we've been discussing your performance for that long. So being part of a leader is not to surprise your employees, setting a standard, and when they fall short, giving them the opportunity to succeed and giving them the tools to do that.
Describe a time when you made a mistake at work. How did you deal with this situation and what was the outcome?
When I was at the city of Moose Lake, it was my first city administrator position. And I talked earlier about this major flood. Well, part of my job as I moved from a county economic development executive to the city was to manage the flood within that city. They had hired a flood manager, not because they were really an expert, but they had strong relationships with the governing body. And that person wasn't doing a very good job. And I did my best to mentor that individual, try to right the ship, improve performance. But it wasn't improving. The error that I made was not coming to the decision a lot earlier to create a succession plan and review that person for flood mitigation. And the reason I held back was it was my first administrator position. I was on probation. This individual had very strong relationships with the elected board. And I felt, well, this is going to be a career move for me, you know, if I do this right or wrong. But I ended up doing it right. I ended up discharging that individual, putting together a succession plan. And I was very pleased that the governing body supported it, even with those relationships. So what that taught me was, you know, when you, as an administrator, you make a tough decision, you just have to accept the consequences, but you have to go where your experience and your training tell you to go and what the law says. And you just need to follow through. And there could be consequences to that, but you know, you can move on to the next position and you can learn from it.
The county has a three-year strategic plan. What is your experience creating and implementing a strategic plan? And what makes a strategic plan successful? I guess the last part of that, I think, is more important.
Yeah, I've spent about 20 years doing comprehensive economic strategies, community-based planning, and as an administrator and also as an economic development executive. I think the big parts of that plan is to make sure that there's public input, both internal and external stakeholders, that the public is involved in all parts of the process, that management is involved in those processes, that strategic objectives are identified and vetted, and that there are performance measures built in to show that we're being successful. A plan can't just be the success of putting a plan together and then putting it on a shelf. A plan is made to be implemented. And so that's where the performance measures come in. And I think the other important part of the plan, to answer your question, is, you know, things are going to not go correctly. And we need to identify as stakeholders, what are the potential risks and what we're implementing, identifying those risks, the probability the risks are going to occur, and the mitigation strategy of what we're going to do when they occur to lower the cost or the consequence of that risk happening. So that's the final thing, having a risk mitigation strategy is also very helpful.
Thank you.
Pat, if you could describe your current professional network or the steps you'd take to develop a network of local government professionals that you can share ideas with and get advice from?
Right. Well, it's always nice to, with all the counties that border, you know, of course, north, you don't border anyone, but east, west, and south, you know, reaching out to the regional county coordinators and administrators that are out there, doing a monthly or quarterly meeting with them. And we can discuss as peers what's happening in all our areas. It helps me to benchmark what they're doing, to see if it's something that can be applicable to our county. If there are things that we're doing better, you know, we're always happy to help and be able to provide some guidance to them. Being a part of the Associated Minnesota Counties and their county administrator group, that's all the state administrators and coordinators are helpful. Being involved with the other executives at the government level, whether it's the city administrator at Grand Marais, school district superintendents, to be able to talk about levies and budgets and what's happening in their area. I also like to do that on a quarterly basis. And I always like to have members of the governing body participate in that as well. So I think doing all those things has given me an appreciation of kind of where we're at compared to others and also where we're going and collecting a lot of good information that I can bring back to the board as an update standpoint.
Thank you.
Would you describe your experience in working with other units of government to develop a service partnership?
Well, one of the things that I'm very proud of is at Mille Lacs County, and if you look on a map, Mille Lacs County is probably the thinnest county that the state of Minnesota has. But one of the big issues we had post-COVID was a lot of schools, students working from home, but we did not have a very good broadband network. It wasn't, there just wasn't a quality opportunities for students. And so we partnered with the school districts and with the city government units. And we pooled COVID dollars and we created a series of towers that ran up the spine of Mille Lacs County that served and provided and exceeded the governor's requirements for broadband. So it allowed students to work from home and have access to the internet. It provided an alternative for citizens, you know, to also draw on the internet. And it only worked because the topography of Mille Lacs County was such where it allowed us to create those towers. But we took it, we put together a partnership, put together a project plan on that. We did a lot of surveys to the community and what your price points are, what your take rates are, what you can afford to pay for for internet. And we developed that strategy and implemented those towers and it's been working wonderfully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Describe how you would become involved in the Cook County community and build trust with residents and local business owners.
I think it's important to, when invited, but I certainly will reach out to sit down with all the social groups, whether Rotary or Colonnus, the chamber organizations, be able to present myself to them, give them an update on my background and my skills, certainly work with their executive directors or people within those organizations, and having regular meetings and appreciating and understanding what is happening in the community, what people are saying in the community. But really introducing myself through presentations and usually get invited to those when you get hired and you're new because you're someone new to the community and that's always very valuable. Certainly reaching out to the other government units, being able to present myself, introduce myself to the city councils, the townships, the school districts, to their boards when appropriate. And again, just introduce myself and discuss what we're working on as a county and maintaining that relationship through those executives, as I mentioned before, those superintendents and those other administrators over time.
Cook County wishes to improve its relationship with tribal nations. How will you, I can't read now, how will you demonstrate that you value these relationships? And what will you do to show a meaningful commitment to working together?
Well, it's a great question. I know that's going to be very important for this position. I will tell you, in many positions, I've had very strong, positive relationships with the Minnesota Chippewa tribes. Carlton County, as an economic development person, I actually attended the Fond du Lac Band meetings. They invited me to those meetings because we really had a trusting relationship. In Mille Lacs County, you know, there were some issues, especially with law enforcement. But we also were able to collaborate with the Mille Lacs Band of Jibway on broadband issues and finding common ground that we could work together. And then finally, at Becker County, with the Leach Lake Band, we worked very closely on cannabis sales in feedlots and things like that. So engaging the tribal government unit, having regular meetings with them and with their tribal government unit, but in particular with their staff and their department heads, putting together some core topics that we can agree on. And when there are things we don't agree on, engage, you know, the government unit, the tribal government unit on why we have issues and have honest conversations about that. I'm very experienced in inherent tribal authority and what that means. And so I'm very excited, and that was one of the reasons I was attracted to this position is because you do have a tribal government unit. And, you know, they are county citizens, no different than our citizens here. And so it's very important to engage the government unit, but also don't ignore where we disagree. I mean, we just have to have honest conversations about things we could agree on and move forward with, but also where we can mitigate the issues that we have.
Thank you. Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity and ethical standards. Here's an easy one for you.
Yeah, no, no. I tell you, it's, you know, it's not easy being an administrator. And I think the one thing that I was most proud of when I came on at Becker County is, you know, I normally had a department of five people there and I was the only one there because everyone had left. And about 25% of the working population at the Becker County government was leaving every year. So there was obviously an issue. And what I found as I delved into it is, we were not valuing the employees to the level as other county government units were. We weren't doing performance reviews. We hadn't done performance reviews in 40 years, 40 years. We hadn't done performance reviews. Hadn't updated job descriptions for four decades. Hadn't done exit interviews to understand why people are leaving. Had not done orientation training. And so, you know, I documented these issues and brought it to the board. And of course, the board wasn't happy to hear all the negative stuff. But I said, you know, the recidivism rate, you know, for people leaving is significant. We need to bring that down. And here's how we're going to do it. We're going to right all these issues that we have and start doing performance reviews and all the things that I've listed. So we set up continuous improvement teams and we got all that work done within a few months. And what I was excited is, at the time I left, because we were continuing to measure people leaving, we had reduced that amount of people leaving to like 3%. So people appreciated that they were being valued, there was structure, they were being respected, and they were contributing to that structure. And they weren't looking for other work. They were staying right where they were. But it was a tough discussion to have with the board because a lot of them felt that it was their fault. And what I explained to them is, it's not your fault. You are the deciders. The fault lies with the administrator, the HR director. We have failed to get this work done for you. We've identified it and now we're going to get it done with your blessing. And they said, go for it. And we did get it complete.
Thank you.
Pat, if you could describe a past experience correcting an employee performance problem and how you would approach correcting an employee performance issue?
Well, I think one of the examples that stick out, that sticks out in my career is, you know, we've had, and again, I'm not going to, because we're talking about personnel issues, but we had, I had one employee at Mille Lacs County that was having some real trouble. It was a very important position that interacted with a lot of departments, but was having a lot of trouble getting the work done, showing up on time, respecting, you know, the responsibilities of others. And, you know, since it was one of my direct reports, it's important to have that meeting with them one-on-one, let them know I'm seeing a problem. But also getting their perspective, and this answers the other part of your question, getting their perspective of what do they see the same problem? And what do they see from their standpoint? And the good news is, is they owned much of it. And I'm a big believer in redeeming yourself. I've fallen short many times in my life, having the opportunity to redeem yourself. And I want that for my employees. I want every opportunity for them to right the ship and do- I want every opportunity for them to right the ship and do better. And so we did put together a performance improvement plan, which is not a negative. That's just a plan that we agreed to and they agreed to on what's expected of them moving forward. Now, if they don't implement that PIP, there could be consequences, but it does let them know how they're being measured and what's expected of them. And I was very happy that they responded in a positive way. But I will tell you that, you know, if you were to ever ask me the worst thing that I wish I'd never had to do, and that's to terminate somebody. Because I own that. I feel I've fallen short if I have to let someone go. Even though they may be responsible for all their behavior, did I miss something? Is there something I could have done to right that ship and bring them back? And again, you're dealing with someone's income, you're dealing with someone's family. So when, if they earned the right to be terminated, they should be terminated. But at the same time, I'm a big believer in trying to find a way to bring them back and to make them successful and to use the skills they have to improve their behavior and move forward.
Thank you.
So Pat, please describe some priorities that you would see for Cook County.
Well, for me, coming on board, my initial priority would be to appreciate and understand and meet with each individual department head, those one-on-one meetings that I spoke of, and really understand the issues that are going on within their department, to meet with each of you individually, to understand your perspective for your district and what you expect of this position. As I've indicated, just like I want my direct reports to know how they're being measured, I want to know how I'm being measured. And I want to make sure that I'm following through on the deliverables that you, as a board, want me to do. So putting together, I think, a document that just says, Pat, these are the things that we would like you to do. But I also would, based on the meetings I'm having with my department, I may have some additional items to add to that. As far as what's out in the community, I think that the big issue for me is, and I mentioned this before, is we're kind of in some strange times with federal funding, you know, being affected through a number of executive orders that could affect certain county departments here, like human services. We have a state budget deficit that's significant that could affect, again, the revenues that we receive here and potential bonding opportunities. So I think one of the big priorities is to appreciate your existing budget and the new budget that we're going to be proposing and how we're going to develop that and roll that out. And I probably would like to start it a little earlier, just with what I'm seeing at the federal and state level. But I'm born and raised economic development. That's where I got my stripes, and I'm a big believer in creating wealth and understanding how we can create new funding mechanisms outside of a traditional levy, how we can help the business community, how we can be vibrant and strong. I know tourism is a big-ish, a big core of this community. And I would work very closely with our economic development teams, both at the regional and county and local level, to be a part of wealth creation for the area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Why should the Cook County Board select you as our next county administrator?
Well, I think, again, I know that you're interviewing another candidate. I think what I bring to the table is I'm not from here. I'm from the region. But I bring a different perspective, a different objectivity, a different set of eyes. Like I said, I will learn and I will absorb and be a part of this culture that, in your county government unit. I have a strong skill set with working with a number of tribal government units. I have a strong skill set both in manufacturing and private sector work, but also quite a bit of years of experience in county and city administration. And I would urge you to look at that resume and look at those achievements. Those are things that we achieved as a county government, and I don't call them my achievements. We achieved as a group of department heads and as a county board. And I do see challenges here at Cook County, but they're the same challenges I'm seeing in every government unit. And I'm attracted to the challenges, probably like a moth that's attracted to a flame. I really enjoy and to be a part of something, to improve something, to make something better. And I think you have a solid team of managers. I think you have, you as commissioners are objective, and you're opinionated, but you speak your mind, and I like that as a county board. So it's a county board that I can work with and I would really enjoy reporting to and being a part of. But I do think that skill set in economic development and proven success at both county and city administration, and the fact that I've been doing that both in the private sector and public sector, and again, those successes as an administrator, I think make me a worthy candidate for consideration.
Would you believe we're almost to the end?
I can't believe it. Pat's looking at his watch.
But I have one more question for you.
Oh, excellent.
Do you have any questions for us?
Oh, those are good ones, yeah. Well, yeah, and I usually just have one question that I always like to ask, and maybe each of you could just give me your input, if you're comfortable doing that, is, like I said, you're all from a different district. You all have your own expectations and goals and objectives. I guess I would just like to know your number one priority, each of you as a commissioner, what you would like to see this administrator coming in accomplish or focus on or research or benchmark? What is that one thing that sticks out in your mind that you're, you would like the administrator, if we were to have our one-on-one meeting, what you would want me to focus on?
Well, I'm hearing the word communication from your experience. So communication, continuing communication would be something that I think is important for all entities, whether we're working in one end of the county or the other.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Pat. That's a good question. And, you know, my answer is probably not fair, but I'd say the strategic plan, because that incorporates many different issues, including organizational development and staff development and our capital improvement plan, and the list goes on. So I think that's my cheap answer.
It's hard to say in one word. It's communications, but it's because we need to have trust built among every person that lives in this community and particularly with our community members in Grand Portage to improve the working relationships. But communications is honest communications, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So this is philosophical. And what I would say is that, what I would represent, that I think is the whole of the county, making that assumption, is that as an administrator, you facilitate a process that creates healthy structure based upon known best practices as opposed to strictures. And understanding that leads to all of the things that enable us to be able to achieve, you know, what it is we set out to do, to hold to our values and bring integrity to those values so that people see substance to what we do. So again, I see an administrator as a facilitator of a process to create structure, healthy structure, as opposed to strictures, and to understand the best practices that enable us to be able to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Pat, one of the things that I think is really important coming in is to listen. We have a very diverse county, not only in terms of our population, but in terms of just the needs of different areas of the county. And so taking into account all of those needs as you begin to evaluate and make decisions and recommendations to this board. And then, in concert with something that Commissioner Mills mentioned, he related, needs related to our strategic plan. And part of it is making sure that we provide support and growth opportunities for the great people that we have working for the county. And I think professional growth is really important so that we can retain the good employees that we have.
Well, thank you for that. I really appreciate that that was a very diverse set of answers, because I'm sort of sensing that in many of the meetings, where you guys have talked about it, at the governing body meetings. And I certainly share the idea and the concept of best practices and planning at the county level, but having individuals participate in that planning process, both internal and external stakeholders. So I'm very excited about what I've heard from you. So I really want to thank you for those answers.
Thank you very much. This concludes our time together.
Did I make the cut there, Pat? Very good. Well, thank you all. Appreciate your time.